Nick's making noises all day.
He's in heavy thought of some kind, I don't know.
I'm about to win a bet.
Did you have too much cheesecake?
The over/under was two and a half public comments and I took the under.
Good evening. Sorry, I always feel so bad stopping everybody, but good evening, it is seven o'clock. I would like to call to order the October 10th of 2022 Regular Meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake School Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Tornello, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Reedy. Mr. Roskus.
Here.
Mrs. Menzer.
Here.
Mrs. Baer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting. To ensure all are aware of the way these meetings operate, we would like to share the following. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each addenda item for the board's approval. Board members have the opportunity to call our superintendent and treasurer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. Board members are not permitted, per Ohio Meetings Acts and Sunshine laws, to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time in which we as a board can conduct, as a whole, conversations related to all items on the agenda. This meeting's agenda is always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. Community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. To participate in public comments, participants should sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are provided a copy of our public participation policy and participants are asked to abide by those requirements. As the meeting progresses, you will see the board discuss items and not vote. Those items are marked with an asterisk on our agenda. These items are a part of our consent calendar. To ensure our meetings move along, we vote to approve all of these items at the end of our meeting. Other items without an asterisk are voted on individually for a variety of reasons which are outlined in our policies. Lastly, the way in which we conduct our meetings is outlined in our policies. You can locate these on the Board of Education tab on the district's website. With that, we will start working on our agenda. We will now go to Item 2A, Approval of Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve Item 2A?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 2A.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Discussion? Mr. Tornello?
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We'll move on to Item 3A, Community Engagement, Board President Q and A. So last month, we did have two meetings, however, well, two meetings of the public, in which one was on the 12th and one was on the 14th. The 12th had public comment, the 14th did not. We had two individuals speak on the 12th. That was Ms. Jamie Schatzman in regards to the levy, just urging the board and administration to answer questions of the public if and when posed to us. And of course, we will absolutely and always, in a factual manner, provide information to whomever requests it. And the second one was Mr. Syracusea in regards to a board investigation. So at this point, the investigation was posted on the district's website for full disclosure, all 100 and plus 140 pages. He had a few gentle questions that I'd just like to address to ensure that we all have the same information. Question one was why we hadn't notified the community. We did address that in the meeting on the 14th. We were told by law enforcement as well as legal that when there is an ongoing investigation, we needed to abstain from conversation or discussion until the investigation was complete so that we would not interfere with the investigation. Why was the board member not censured until after? Why was the board member not censured until after the event had occurred? Censure requires us to specifically identify policies in which there are founded violations. So we had to complete the investigation to go ahead and issue a censure. The investigation obviously was conducted in accordance with law enforcement and legal advisement. Another question was our superintendent search and why it was being delayed. Our superintendent search is being done in accordance with what we deem is the best approach, was to take our time, and the board has discussed this, it was discussed in one of our meetings as well. We want to ensure that the community, our staff, our families are part of the process. Also, we want to ensure that we have the best pool of candidates by which to select from and by, and Mr. Murphy, please correct me if I'm wrong. In the event that you are a current superintendent, whether superintendent or assistant superintendent or an administrator, currently under contract with a district, if you break that contract before a certain date, you are subject to consequences with the state of Ohio. That means there might be great individuals who might do beautiful things for our district who are not currently eligible for hire. So we're going to eventually get to the superintendent search, as noted in our communications, that'll be after the new year. And I think those were the most of the questions that he had. So that addresses our board president Q and A. With that, Mr. Tornello, we'll move on to Item 3B, Public Comment.
Nancy Mara.
Three minutes, right?
Yes.
Thank you for letting me address the board. I know there's a levy coming. I'm sorry. Nancy Mara, 39 Minnie Wawa Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to write M-I-N-N-E. Okay. Everybody spells it wrong. I'd like to address the board, and this is something that I'd like you to look into. My phone got many texts this weekend, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, due to the choice of homecoming king and queen of Eastlake North. I understand we have social, emotional learning, inclusivity is our buzzwords here. I guess even a mentor tomorrow, they're having a vote on whether the teachers should be taking a course on that. But how far do we go to include what I saw? How far do we go when we know that students are questioning which gender they are and then nominate them as the winners? I understand when I was a long time ago in high school, that students pick other students. If this was meant for a wow factor from the kids, they got my wow. Was it a shock value? They got my shock. But I don't know who the moderator was of these children. There's a levy coming up. These school boards have to look into how many people already, I got some phone calls, I sit on city council. I promote this levy. Why are we sexualizing our children than condoning it, putting it out in the public? I think it's off now, but enough people have phone messages because other kids, of course, go to other homecomings and they send pictures to each other, who won? Children don't know what they are, who they are in high school. You know, we're all, they don't know what to put on, to wear to school the next morning. But have we gone so far, so far left and politicized our children so much and now we sexualize them to guess, to doubt who they are, and then we lift them up as homecoming king and queen? Whoever the moderator was of these children has an agenda too. I'd like you to look into this and start teaching, going back to teaching and the basics and lifting our rating of Willoughby North. So when I talk about this levy, they're not looking at a picture, especially all the senior citizens who show me a picture, and I didn't think, I didn't think a lot of them knew how to even work social media, see for my judgment, and show me, is this what's going on? Please, let not, let the inmates run the asylum. Thank you.
Nancy Nack.
Thank you. Nancy Nack, 28946 Beachwood Drive, Will Oak, Ohio. I'm here this evening on behalf of W E C P and all of our volunteers, working to bring our vision of the Hart Hub Adaptive Playground to reality. We as a group would like to publicly express our sincere appreciation to all the students and staff at North and South High School for their recent donation of $21,624.22. Once again, we want to express our thanks to the students and staff at North and South High. Thank you very much, Brian and Eric, because you both were very, very instrumental in this and we can't thank you enough. That's it.
Thank you. Was that it, Mr. Tornello?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. We'll now move on to Item 4A, Board Discussion. So I've made a couple of notes for things to discuss, and I know we have some individuals that may be your first time or recent time coming. So this is our time to speak and discuss as a board, to go over things that maybe we need to take action on or just have a conversation about that we can't do otherwise due to Ohio Meetings Acts or Sunshine Law. So maybe let's talk about, the first thing that's top of mind, the board member search. So does anybody want to take a second and submit the action we took this time? I'm more than happy to. I forgot my water tonight, so I apologize. Hi. So we conducted the board member search in accordance with the exact same procedure that we did last time. So applications were submitted, we had 21 this time, and we provided an opportunity for each of the 21 applicants to have an interview, first round, and then we narrowed it down to a second round. Us as a board asked questions. This time, we asked open-ended questions. We did four, and they were fairly high level. What issue motivated you to apply for this position? How do you feel that your service will benefit the district? What issues would you like the board to tackle in the future? And how would you go about tackling those if you were to be appointed to the board? And it really allowed us to have an open conversation, I think, with the members who applied. And another stellar group of individuals. I have to say, we are continuously impressed by the candor, the professionalism, the passion that each member or each person that applied to be a member brought. And after our first round, we narrowed it down to a top three, and then we unanimously voted this time on one individual. So it was a fairly smooth process and, once again, extended to each person who applied. We would be more than happy in the future, as opportunity presents itself, to have those individuals contribute in a variety of ways that we know are up and coming for our district, to which many of them replied back saying, "We would love to, please let me be involved in any way we can." So we welcome that and we thank those individuals. Did I leave anything out?
Well, after we brought them back.
For people at home.
Yeah, it's fine. We had them come back for the second one and we gave them a scenario-based question so that way we could kind of get an idea on the thought process they would have based on the scenario. And all of them gave awesome answers. I mean, it was amazing. It was really, really tough to think that the people in the community are really doing their diligence and research, they're connected with the community. All of the last three, all of them either have businesses or experience within the school district, within the community, with the businesses, children, family members, all involved in the community. And it was amazing to be able to sit down and hear what these individuals brought to the table. Also, they had some great ideas from when they were communicating with other members in the community, because we don't all get a chance to do something like that. So they gave us some great ideas to go forward on things that they thought were important to the school district, that they were hearing from people in the community. So it was really tough when it got down to those three. And, you know, I'm honored to be able to say that the person that was selected is going to be able to work with us.
So the agenda item to appoint the new board members at the end of tonight's meeting, it's on purpose. This individual would not have had time to properly research, become informed, and then to take an active vote on items on the agenda this evening. It was purposely structured that way to ensure that that individual is given enough time before the next meeting to become truly current and ask the questions that they deem appropriate prior to issuing a vote. You'll also see on the item, there's a line, there isn't a name there. That was done on purpose because this is a, we wanted that individual to really think, whomever it was, same thing with Mr. Reedy, really think about joining the board and ensure that they had enough time to truly consider. And we didn't want to put a name there and have somebody maybe say, "No, that's okay, I'm good," and then have to appoint someone else. So that's why there's a line there. I felt it was important to be, once again, transparent and direct with the community on why the agenda item was created the way that it was. And the individual that was selected and will be joining the board is Ms. Jamie Schatzman. So we're not going to wait till the very end of the meeting, we'll just let the cat out of the bag so we can move on. So if anybody came this evening to find out, you now are aware. Once again, we are a very direct board, we want to communicate with the community in as timely a manner as possible. Okay? Anything else with regard to the board member search? Okay. So let's pivot to another topic that we do need to discuss and make a decision about tonight as a board, is we do need to support our two new board members to get them up to speed and running as quickly as possible. We have a lot of very important work ahead of us. So I worked with Mr. Tornello, who reached out to the ESC. You were able to get an estimate for us for a training, which is similar training that Stacy and I and John were able to have when we onboarded. The ESC training, Nick, can you just high-level some of the topics that will be covered, that we are proposing to be covered?
Yes, they, it's, it's boardmanship, so what's it, what does it mean to be a new board member? Coming from the outside, I'm sure Mr. Reedy can attest, it's a little bit different being over here. So what does it take to be a board member? What are your expectations? And then also tying a lot of what you do back to board policy. So it's tailored towards our district and our policies, and then it's a good Q and A session. So whatever you think you guys really need at the time, they're there to help.
So one of the things that we have to make a decision on as a board is, we were able to do it together as a unit previously. Do we want to have Mr. Reedy and Ms. Schatzman meet with Nick and, I'm sorry, Mr. Tornello and Mr. Murphy with the ESC? Or would we like it to be a work session in which the rest of the board can be present as well?
I think it would be helpful for it to be a work session.
I agree.
So the great thing about the work session would be that it would be livestreamed and recorded, so the community could also see and hear how we're being trained and discussing policy, what our policies are, which ones are high-impact and important for onboarding new members. Another part of that, what I thought could also be there, and this was something that we need to discuss, as per our meeting on the 14th, one of the things that we left is that the board itself would receive additional training and clarification on purpose so that we ensure that we are all fully informed on that moving forward to ensure that we do not have additional situations, okay, with regard to the investigation. So I was also wondering if we could include that item for the ESC?
Sure, I could tell.
I figured if we were all going to be there, it's a good time to do it, okay? And this way too, it'll also be for the community to see and hear about our policies and how we discuss them and how they apply. Now, there's a lot of policies, so we won't be able to go over all of them, but the ESC did a great job of high-leveling some of the ones to start with. Okay? An additional part of the onboarding for the new board members, and I feel this is kind of important because Erin, you and I have discussed it. Once again, Sunshine Law, only two members can speak, we all can't talk. It's important for our new board members to be afforded the opportunity to learn about our buildings, their current state for maintenance, the security measures that are in place, and areas where Mr. Johnson and Mr. Murphy are working with that 410,000 that we just received with grant funds. So, Mr. Murphy, have you been, had a chance to reach out and schedule times yet with Mr. Reedy?
I have spoken to him about it. We haven't actually scheduled a time because I also wanted to wait for our new board member to come onboard, but I did give him an overview today of what we talked about, and so I figured as soon as tomorrow, I'd start working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, Mr. Reedy, what were your thoughts about the suggestion for the strategic approach to sit down and do the information session first, learn about the building schematics, needs and wants, and then schedule times to go out?
Well, regarding the meeting stuff, Mr. Tornello has given me that big binder, and I love it. I've been sitting at the kitchen table, I hope I don't have to give it back because I've been highlighting.
You can keep it.
Highlighting, making notes that I can ask questions and things like that. There's so many policies. This is worse than working for the federal government. I don't mean worse. I mean, there's a lot of, there's so much stuff. And not only does it cause some frustration with the community on communication, I'm like so frustrated because I just like to talk, 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 and I'll try not to talk forever tonight. But yes, no, I'm looking forward to that, how we can communicate, you know, with the community, what we can say, can't say, and all that kind of stuff. So I'm looking forward to that. Regarding going out to the schools, I think it's extremely important that if we're going to be voting on things that could affect the schools, that's going to affect the students, it's imperative. It's like, to me, it's mandatory to be able to see the schools, to get my hands dirty and all that kind of stuff, to see what's going on. And Mr. Murphy and I have talked about that. And briefly, it's, there's a couple days because there's a lot of schools in the district, a lot of buildings, and so we're talking about a couple days to be able to go out and see the buildings and get a better understanding. I mean, my kids are in one school, I've talked with kids in other schools on things that they want. Some, you know, they don't know as much about the buildings and security, they want pizza that tastes really good and stuff like that, but for us, it's our duty to do due diligence to see these things firsthand. I know Homeland Security has also reviewed it, but I think the more eyes you have on the problems, the better opportunities you have for solutions. So he and I will certainly get a chance to do that with Mr. Johnson and with Ms. Schatzman when she comes onboard, so I'm looking forward to that as well.
Okay. What we would ask Mr. Murphy and Mr. Reedy is, after that is complete, whichever the next regular board meeting is, is to maybe come up with some things that we can, because the board said back in August, we would like to continuously review security measures, building concerns, and the like. So November, December at latest, reporting out, would that be okay? So that we can all be current with what your opinions and viewpoints are?
Right now, do you want me to also bring the stuff that I've talked with the, don't laugh. I've talked with some schools in Australia and Japan to see what they do for like safety and security and their mental health and stuff like that. I can't speak Japanese, I use Google Translate, which is horrible, but I can bring that stuff as well to see, you know, if there's anything that we can use from what other areas are doing, because like I said, more eyes on and ears and stuff, I think, can bring up some good possibilities.
Absolutely, thanks.
So Ms. Schatzman, you'll also be reporting out and joining that, that'll be your first. Thank you. Go ahead. Of course.
A little bit change of subject, but while we're on the topic of work sessions, I thought perhaps we could have a work session to talk about the OSBA conference. We have a delegate that will be voting on different bylaws and amendments to the OSBA constitution, and I flipped through a large document. There's a bunch of changes in here, most of them seem pretty benign, but there is a pretty significant new change, including parental right to know, a couple paragraphs on that. And since our membership in this organization is funded by taxpayer dollars, I thought it would be great for the community to know how our district will represent a vote on these items.
So, Mr. Tornello, I'm the delegate now, correct? Because I was the alternate? Okay. So one of the things I was going to do in advance of going was to review everything at length. Do you think we should call a work session prior to that meeting to review those as a board?
I think so, we can all be on the same page, knowing how the vote will be given.
So, Mr. Tornello, if you know, just ask, obviously, this would be my first time serving as a delegate, John as well. So is it customary that we'll meet as a board and together decide as a board how we will vote, I would assume? So based on the issues, is that how it was conducted last year?
We did not last year. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't.
Mr. Tornello, I know we are hoping to get the ESC training before the end of the month, correct? So maybe we could, in that meeting, have it, because it's going to be a special meeting, have it on the agenda to discuss it as a board, do a two-for-one?
Sure.
What do we think? Is that a good time? Is that okay? John? Okay, awesome. So, meeting.
Well, I do have a question, will that be after normal business hours?
Yes, oh yeah. It'll be in the evening or on the weekend?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send an email out and we'll get some dates. So, okay, awesome. Anything else? No? I think that's an excellent idea, kind of buttons it all up together. Okay. One of the things that we will, you had your first meeting, Ms. Menzer, for policy. Do we want to discuss that now, or do you want to do it during Item 9A when we discuss the review of the policies?
We can discuss it now.
Okay. You just want to update us on how that meeting went?
Sure, I met with Mr. Murphy and Niola and Mr. Iarisi, did I say that correctly? The new interim assistant superintendent, and we went through a bunch of board policies to go through any legal changes that needed to be done. You'll see on the agenda, there's a bunch of policies that were amended up for our first reading tonight. I think that the meeting went well, but thinking about it, I do think that we need to form a policy committee because there are so many policies and it is the board's purview to make changes to policy, and we shouldn't have to wait for a meeting with Niola if we wanted to change something.
So the policy committee, are you thinking to make it administrative-led or board-led? Which one?
Probably board-led.
Okay. It's a policy.
That's my initial thought, of course, we have to talk through it.
I'm excited that we're finally, we've talked about this a couple times, is getting our hands into our policy, and Mr. Murphy's been always very supportive even prior to being the interim superintendent. So we really kind of have to look into what would that committee look like? Who would comprise the committee, right? So, do you feel comfortable maybe putting something together and working with Mr. Murphy to kind of propose it to the board in November so we can?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, we're doing the first read of those policies tonight, and then we'll have the second read in November. Is there anything about those policies that you feel needs immediate board attention from the conversation?
I don't think so, most of it was pretty minor changes.
Agreed.
Okay. So we're really looking at maybe our existing, maybe it's not the updates that align with Ohio Revised Code, but maybe it's looking at our policies, specific, more in-depth. I think one of the greatest examples is our board vacancy policy with the May or the Shell. So that's a great example of the small things that we'd be looking to ensure are the most efficient way to go about doing things. Okay. Okay. And I could just throw out a suggestion, maybe we start with our board bylaws, like the zeros first, because those are really our control, right? Okay. Okay. So actionable items is to ensure that on the agenda that we schedule for the work session here in the next few weeks, we'll not only include the ESC training for our two new board members, including our attendants, but also the delegate assembly, the changes being proposed by OSBA so that we can ensure that we're all on the same page. And should we put policy on there too, or let that just be you and Mr. Murphy and then report back out in November?
Can we put that for November?
November, okay. So it will not be on the one. Awesome.
Okay.
Anything else up to this date so far? Okay. Okay, so, doo 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 doo, just checking my notes. One more quick thing, and then, Mr. Roskus, we'll get to the community advisory committee. So one of the things that we've discussed as a board prior to Mr. Reedy being on was reviewing the current mechanisms in place for mental health supports for our students, as well as the crossroads contract and where we stand. So I think, Mr. Murphy, one of the things that we discussed was potentially November, having them report out, is that still on track?
That is on track, yes.
Okay, so they'll be able to report out. Now, will it just be crossroads and their direct interactions with the district? Or will we have cumulative district feedback as well, maybe from pupil services or from some administrators?
Yes, we will be able to provide some district feedback as well.
Okay, awesome. And then, Mr. Reedy, I know mental health is an area of strength and significant interest. Do you feel that you would, you guys could coordinate together? I know there's been a lot of questions, so is that maybe something you could work on?
Yes, Mr. Murphy has done a great job so far with communicating what's going on as far as that meeting coming up in November. And I'm going to work on some questions that I would like to ask them in particular. And I'll submit them to Mr. Murphy so he can give that to them, and I'm looking forward to it. There's so much going on in mental health in the schools, sometimes the kids don't talk to the parents. And so making sure that the kids have the best opportunity to have somebody to talk to. And so Mr. Murphy and I have been communicating on that, and he's given me some information that he's already researched, so.
And Mr. Roskus, at our April 23 retreat, you did significant research, working with the district cabinet, to kind of poll what we already have in place. I feel it would be very appropriate for you to share that with Mr. Reedy?
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Roskus did an amazing job in April of really working with our administrators to see what we had in place, what different things we already are doing, what we have future cited. So it'll give you that district perspective as well to ask Q and A. Okay. Okay. Moving on to the community advisory committee, Mr. Roskus, take it away.
Okay, so the community advisory committee, which was formerly the strategic planning committee, met last month. And we talked about creating a proposal, so we worked on creating a proposal for a new format of the committee. So I just wanted to review what that may look like. And of course, this would be something that the rest of the board will have to take a look at and provide input. So the community advisory committee proposal, this committee is modeled after a similar committee that was established in Westlake. And the proposed Willoughby Eastlake Community Advisory Committee will work to enhance the education of all Willoughby Eastlake school students through community engagement and district partnership. So we were looking at a committee that would consist of 12 appointed members, two students, the superintendent, and also a representative from the board. So the 12 core members would be appointed by the Board of Education. So this would be a board committee that would be open to, and it will also be a board committee that's open to the public. So these meetings will be published, and the public will be welcomed to attend them. And now these core members would also have voting rights, and their term would be two years for the maximum of three consecutive terms. The two students, high school students, would be recommended by the principals. They would also have voting rights, and their terms would be one year with a maximum of three consecutive years. And the superintendent and the Board of Education representative would have no voting rights, and they would serve as ex officio members of the committee, and their term would be the duration of their position. And also, the committee would elect a chairperson to run the meetings, coordinate the work and projects, and serve, consult with the board, and also serve as the committee's spokesperson. There would also be a co-chair to assist in the absence of the chair, and also assist with other duties. And we would also appoint a secretary to keep minutes, maintain a website if we were able to develop that, and also maintain a membership list. Going back to the purpose of the committee, on an annual basis, the committee will facilitate research, research projects on relevant topics of importance to the community, students, administration, and the Board of Education. And these findings resulting from this research will be used by the committee to generate recommendations to the board and administrators. So we developed a timeline, and this is up for, you know, this can be amended, but this is kind of what we were looking at initially. So today, I'm presenting this proposal for consideration. And we were looking at November 21st as possibly a first reading of the policy establishing the Community Advisory Committee as this proposal suggests. And on December 12th, we would be looking at a second reading and a possible vote on establishing the Community Advisory Committee. And then at the beginning of, or towards the end of the year, and the beginning of next year, we would begin membership selection and appointment, choosing officers, and establishing bylaws and rules for the committee. We were looking at not beginning our research cycle until the summer of 2023. This, of course, might be, we might end up doing it more quickly than that, but that was just kind of our initial thoughts when we were putting it together. So, sort of like a year that, you know, what a typical year would look like between this committee and the board if it's established. So initially, research topics would be proposed by the committee. And these would be submitted to the Board of Education, which would then provide feedback and also indicate what topics they think are important. Within a month or two, these topics would be finalized, and then teams would be established to work on these various projects. Also, a scope of the project and methodology for completing the project would be established. And then subsequently, within the months following, there'd be status updates to the Board of Education on the projects. Then there would be a draft of the research, and then eventually a final report. And Board of Education feedback on the projects themselves. So in other words, after the projects were completed, the Board of Education would provide feedback to the committee as to whether the projects were worthwhile and meaningful, so.
What are your thoughts?
Outside of those members that get voted in, how can the rest of the community participate with that committee?
Well, the meetings would be, would be open to the public, so there would be an opportunity perhaps for additional engagement.
How's the appointment process work?
Well, the committee suggests that the members be appointed by the Board of Education. We didn't discuss, I guess, the particulars on whether there would be an application or that type of thing, so.
Off the top of my head, I'm thinking of the almost 60-plus individuals that applied for, you know, the board vacancy seats to be a great pool of individuals. We already kind of know what their skills are, we have resume, we have feedback, and these individuals are highly motivated. And we know one of the hardest things about committees is getting people to continuously be able to contribute. So we need to have individuals who, who understand the importance of that. I think that might be a good starting point for a pool, what are our thoughts?
About the people that are already on the committee?
Well, the people, yeah, so, but those, how many individuals are currently active?
Oh, four, probably four of them, yeah.
Okay, so I think that's it, we have the individuals who were part of that pool, plus we have the individuals that applied for the board vacancy. That's a good substantial amount of individuals who could potentially be on it. Do we start there? Do we do an application process with all those individuals to see if they're truly interested?
I think if you limited to just the board seat, you could be excluding people that would want to be on this committee, but maybe if you want to be on the board but not the committee, or vice versa.
True, very true.
I think we could look at the people that did apply for the board seat, you know, as, to gauge whether they have an interest, but also open it up to others.
Okay, so do we want to do like, just open up first to the individuals who already were on the committee to see who definitely wants to stay, and then take applications for the remaining difference? Or do we want to just invite people, just application?
What are your thoughts?
That's hard because, I'm sorry.
Well, I know that there were definitely some people in the application process that said, yes, they would definitely be interested in that. So for those individuals, I think, you know, definitely reach back out to them and let them know.
Okay.
Maybe the four members also that are on there, they might have some recommendations. You know, I'm sure they've probably been talking to the people as well, and see if they have any thoughts on individuals they think might be good for the board or the committee.
Yeah, okay. 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 So John, do you want to take the lead on reaching out to those key individuals who've actively been a part of the committee thus far? The creation of the proposal? And then also maybe email the remaining individuals to see what the interest still is? And then let us, I mean, from there, we could just post an application, right?
Sure.
Okay. One of the other things with regards to this committee that, you know, has been kind of sitting in the back of my head is trying to get out and be in touch with parts of our community that don't have children or directly receive services from the district, who may not be aware. And that was something that we discussed with the strategic planning committee, is how are we going to get that out to the community at large? Not just families and staff of the district. So I don't think we're in a time crunch per se, but maybe partnering with the cities to see if we can get it maybe posted on their websites, so that we can get their community, the community at large, not just those that receive services from the district, to maybe also be aware of the application, which was one of the hurdles that we encountered with the strategic planning committee. Okay, so, okay, cities. I can go ahead and send some emails out to the city councils and see if, what we can do there. Okay. John, thank you so much for staying the course. And thank you to the individuals who have served on the committee for putting in the time and effort to put this together. We know that this, Mr. Trenello and I were talking about this the other day. It seems like it just can't get off the ground, but we have to remember that Westlake's has been in place for 40 years.
Forty.
If we put the right amount of time into creating it now, and we do it in a way that is appropriate, it builds sustainability. And it's going to feel like it's not doing much for the first year, but once it's established and running and operating, it will have an impact. We just, this is a long-term committee, just standing it up for one issue. I really love where this has gone, thank you so much.
And anybody here, you know, you're more welcome to send an email and say, I want to be a part of that. And those of you at home also that would watch.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Okay, okay. Anything else for board discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we had a bunch, okay. So we can now move on to item 5A, approval of minutes of September 12th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5A?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 5A.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus, floor is open. Mr. Trenello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Moving on to item 5B, approval of minutes, September 14th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5B?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for 5B.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer, floor is open. Mr. Trenello?
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Moving on to item 5C, approval of minutes, September 23rd, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5C?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 5C, approval of minutes of September 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion for 5C, approval of minutes for September 23rd.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy, floor is open. Mr. Trenello?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Moving on to item 5D, approval of minutes, September 27th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5D?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 5D.
Thank you, Ms. Menzer, do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second the motion for minutes of 5D for September 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy, floor is open. Mr. Trenello?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Mr. Trenello?
Thank you. The first item is 6A, these are the monthly financials for September 30th, 2022. I wanted to point out that our revenues are exceeding estimates so far. A sizable portion of that are our interest earnings. We have received 364% more this year than last year to date. So that is one good thing about rates rising, so that would be about $123,000 more than last year. So, you know, we're doing our best to take the cash when we get it, and it's not being utilized to maximize those interest-bearing opportunities. But like I said, it doesn't offset quite what our costs are doing, but we're doing everything we can. I always point out that we are heavily reliant on local property taxes. Last month, we collected 40.5% of our revenues for the year, and through one more month, we have collected 42%. So in one month, we collected 1.5% of our revenues. So that just shows, you know, outside of the first and second half property tax collections, we don't really collect a significant portion of our revenues, it's really driven by property taxes. As far as our expenditures go, we are slightly behind. This is primarily due to timing, which is invoices are coming in and paid, and a lot of this is driven by supply chain issues. We've been seeing a lot of things just not showing up, or people not being able to complete the work in a timely manner. We ordered buses, I believe, in April, and still don't have school buses, maybe next month, maybe the month after that. I'm not sure, I know Mr. Adams back there keeps bugging me, and I keep bugging them, but I don't, I don't know what to do about that. They probably don't have tires or something right now, I don't know. As far as our time sheets, you could see substitutes in classroom coverage are a little down, that's twofold. One, it's a lag in terms of, you could turn your time sheets in, they got to get reviewed, they got to be processed. So there is a lag in terms of processing time sheets also, it's just very difficult to find substitutes at this time. So, I know, Mr. Murphy probably hates finding substitutes more than anybody else right now, it's just difficult. And that's across the board. Well, that's not unique to Willoughby Eastlake, that's just a statewide thing. So that's why you'll see some of these things a little lower this month. And then supplemental contracts, those are things for like bus duties and things of that nature. Those have been processed in October, so you'll begin to see those things paid out for the month of October going forward. For 6B, most of the increases are relating to the state and federal grants. The largest would be the 599 fund, that is where the school safety grants, the grant funds have been. That's about, what, $409,000. So you're seeing a lot more activity in the 400 and 500 level funds, those are state and federal funds. And we have to budget those or get them approved, so that way we can begin spending those down. 6C, these are purchase orders. This is instances where invoices were dated prior to the purchase order being created. Some of these were invoiced late, others, the purchase order was closed, then the invoice arrived. You could see the one for the Compass Group, that was back from June of 2022. So, you know, we're now in October, the invoice was closed for a fiscal year end, and then it was, it just showed up, I think about a week or two ago. So that's kind of how some of these hit the board agenda. And these are for purchase orders over $3,000. 6D, student activity accounts. These are for our student activity groups and they are for either budget only or budget purpose and goals. They need to have those in place and board approved prior to doing what, doing what it is they want to do. So they need to have those on file and board approved. And lastly, six E, gifts and donations. George Cambic donated a portable generator to the Auto Tech program at NCI Willoughby. The Edison PTO donated $15,000 to Edison for various student activities. Dawn Ojtila, I'd probably butcher that name worse than someone butchers my last name, donated a GM Safari van to the Auto Tech program at NCI Willoughby. Royal View PTA donated $5,400 to the Royal View sensory room floor. The Willoughby South High School Booster Club donated $2,500 to Willoughby for Willoughby Middle School or for using the Willoughby Middle School for bingo events. The SOI PTO donated $3,500 to SOI to be used for the students. Willoughby Middle School PTO donated $10,000 to the Willoughby Athletics. And the Willoughby Eastlake School Foundation donated $4,327.26. And that is in relation to the car raffle. So those are to disperse to the various student accounts that are within the district. So if they were outside of the district, they just cut the checks to those entities. But since these are the ones within the district, they cut the check to us and we distribute it that way.
Just wanted to take a second. I'm sure every member of the board wants to personally thank everybody who worked on those PTAs to raise those funds and for those donations. They're critical to our schools and for all of the community members who contributed as well. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Murphy?
Right. Excuse me.
Can you do it?
All right, I was, I was fighting Dave with the cursor there for a minute. Why is that working? Well, good evening. I'm here to speak to you about, to provide an overview of the 2021-22 district report card. But before I do, I want to say a few words. I just want to thank our certified staff, our classified staff, our administrators, our students and our families for doing such an amazing job to work so hard last year and this year alike to begin to close some of the gaps that were created by the pandemic. And you'll see, I believe it's reflected in this report card. So we still have a lot of work to do, of course, and we're doing it. We're excited about the work, but I'm just really proud of our whole district, staff, students alike, for what they've done to, to get us back on track and, you know, and again, I think this shows this. So this report card, if you don't know, includes a variety of performance data around academic achievement and progress both. It also talks about early literacy, graduation rates, and gap closing. And the data is combined into five different components. There's actually six, but this year they're only looking at five. And they have rated each component using a star rating. And so is, and the indicating, the stars indicate whether districts have either met, have not met, or exceeded the standards in each one of those five components. And I'm very proud to say that Willoughby Eastlake City Schools has either met or exceeded the state standards in each one of the five components. So that was very good news. The first component that they took a look at was the achievement component. And you can see there that we did meet the state standards for the achievement component, which it measures student performance for students in grades three through eight in language arts and math, as well as grades five and eight in science. And in grades nine to 12, it measures student performance in different courses in ELA, math, social studies, and science. In the progress component, we again met the state standards for this component. And this one, simply put, measures academic growth of the current school year as it compares to previous achievement results on the Ohio State test. The next component is the early literacy component. Again, we met the standard for that component and that component measures how we are moving students from not on track to on-track status based on diagnostic test results in grades K to three. And this component looks at several different measures in order to make that determination on whether or not the standard has been met. The next component is the graduation component. And we not only met the standard, but we also exceeded the standard in this component. And this one measures how many students took four years to graduate and how many students took five years to graduate in the 2021 cohort of students. Now, the next component was the gap closing component and we actually significantly exceeded the state standards for this particular component, which measures the reduction of educational gaps for various student groups. It looks at a variety of data and it's including gifted performance, chronic absenteeism, English proficiency for English language learners, graduation goals, and ELA and math achievement and progress by subgroup. Now, as we go through and you think, so how did this happen? Well, I mentioned the first part, happened through a lot of hard work by our people, but it also happened because we've had a coordinated plan to try to make sure that we address and improve both our instruction and our resources that we provide to staff and students. And at this time, I'd like to thank Gina Kevren and the curriculum department for working so hard with our staff to improve our instructional resources. And the next three slides will highlight some of the work our district has done to make these improvements. I'm, I'm not going to read each one, but I want you to see, I'm, I'm going to highlight some things on each page. And on this page, you can see that we've been focusing on research-based instructional practices, which spoiler alert, we've got two of our superstar teachers presenting next that will talk to you a little bit about some of those practices that they're doing in their classroom. And it's really awesome. So we look forward to that. In this next slide, you'll notice that our principals have been working with staff on analyzing both formative and summative individual test data and using that information to inform instruction. And that's a really important aspect when you're looking at trying to improve test scores and improve learning. And finally, you'll see on this slide that we're using several different programs to provide students with alternative pathways to help them successfully graduate from high school, either prepared for college or a career in an industry of their choice. Now, once again, our staff and students have done an excellent job with our number one job, which is teaching and learning, as I like to say. So thank you to them and thank you to everybody. Have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Sorry, we have questions.
Okay.
Should we start at the end or the beginning? Do you want to start at the end? Do you want to ask that one?
Oh, can you explain Project Lead the Way?
I, I can, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. Kevren, who probably could do a better job than I can though, so thank you, Gina.
Gina, would, Ms. Kevren, yes, please, please do. Yes. Thank you. Want to ensure everyone can hear, plus those at home.
So one of the things that we've been trying to do in the district over several years is to increase our focus on STEM. That's science, technology, engineering, and math in the district. In addition to the School of Innovation, we recently adopted a new science curriculum at our middle schools, so they all have hands-on inquiry-based learning in science. And Project Lead the Way is something that we're looking at to increase our capacity at the high school. So we're looking at increasing some computer science classes, engineering essential classes, and some other technology classes through Project Lead the Way. We have used Project Lead the Way for our robotics curriculum previously, so we've had great success with that. So we're looking to expand that.
So one of the individuals who applied for the board vacancy position actually brought that up as something that they would love the district to pursue, and we already are. So just to kind of clarify, are there grant opportunities with Project Lead the Way to help fund some of the expansion of STEM?
Yes, there are some grant opportunities for that and we do have a three-year rollout plan for Project Lead the Way. So we're expecting over the next three years to implement three courses per year. That will help with some of that financial burden.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Might as well just hang out up here. I assume there'll be. So just a few questions, because there's a lot in here. So just to clarify, the star rating system is new to the Ohio Department of Education with this academic year. Okay? And where was my question? So for early literacy, I know there's a lot of mechanisms in place. Is the early literacy three stars rating specifically our program that we have at NCI Eastlake? So it's not necessarily early literacy. So it's, there's components that start in our preschool program and those flow into this three stars for the K through three as well, or is that excluded?
So it doesn't count preschool. So it's looking at students when they enter kindergarten. So we do diagnostics each year on our K three students. So the students would take diagnostics, for example, in kindergarten, and then they look at those students again in first grade and see if they made growth from kindergarten through first grade, each year up through third grade.
And then hoping that that success will breed a positive result with our third-grade reading guarantee?
Yes, it's part of the third-grade reading guarantee program.
Hi. And along the way, what are some mechanisms that we're doing to help with early literacy in our K through three programming?
So one of the things that we've done a couple of years ago is we increased our focus on phonological awareness and phonics, because we're trying to get our students to have those strong foundational skills to be readers. The other thing that we've done on one of the slides that talked about strong tier one instruction, which is your whole group instruction in your classroom, but we've been really focusing on tier two. So in the elementary buildings and in the middle schools, we, at the elementary, we incorporated a 30-minute uninterrupted intervention block. So once we have that diagnostic, diagnostic data on students, we then group those students based on what they need and they get a half hour of intervention every day. And at the middle school, it's probably about 22 minutes. Because of their schedule, it's a little bit different than elementary. So we can really target each student with what they need.
Hi. So I, Ms. Kevren, I truly appreciate you allowing us, put you on the spot like this because I know.
I'm doing my best.
You're doing excellent. So I guess my question would be for our parents who maybe have students who started in the pandemic, either kindergarten or first grade, and now they're in second or third. How are we as a district communicating their readiness to the parents so that they can seek intervention at home and/or be aware that intervention's being provided at school?
So one of the things that we're required to do by the state is provide a reading improvement plan for each student. It's called a RAMP, you know, because we love acronyms in education. So just about this time of the year during conferences, students who have been identified with those deficiencies, the parents will be given a RAMP for that student, which outlines some of the interventions and processes that they're doing at school to help that child. The other thing that we started before the pandemic and we got away from it, but we're trying to bring it back, is we had started a program called Read and Rise, where we invited parents to come in and we helped them with strategies. So we're going to try to get back to improving how many family nights and family literacy nights or math nights that we can provide for parents, so they can have some strategies to help their students at home as well.
Do you have a timeline that you might be able to see that increase? Is maybe the turn of the year?
We were looking at probably starting Read and Rise again in the spring.
Okay. I know a lot of parents of students who started in the pandemic who are trying to assess, is my child on target? Do I need to do more at home? I don't know if, I don't know what to do to help them. So I just wanted to make sure that parents knew that this was something that we were doing and that they can seek speaking with their teachers very soon, right? Because conferences start in, what, two weeks?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that we started a couple of years ago, and we just actually started working on the addition for a couple of weeks from now, is a parent connections newsletter. And we've been trying to think exactly that way. What are some practical things that we can include in that newsletter? Not just announce upcoming events, but what can we give to parents? Resources, access to resources that they can help their student.
Hi.
And Mr. Murphy's Friday memo to the board, he, he spoke about the reading improvement plan, and I did call him to say, hey, you are going to tell parents about this so parents know and can get the help. And he did assure that parents will be notified.
I think it's really important. A lot of us parents who have students who started primary school in the pandemic are really motivated to ensure that they are successful, so. Okay. Wonderful. One of the things I was also was kind of wondering here, and I'm not looking for an answer, more of kind of just starting a dialogue. When it comes to early literacy and supports at home, I know a lot of parents are looking to our Schoolology and looking at the different apps that teachers are selecting and using. So have we done anything or do we have anything in place to help parents understand which ones can they use at home, which ones are for school only? Or is that really the autonomy of the classroom teacher to communicate that?
The classroom teacher should be sharing with their parents and that is something that I can certainly bring up with the principals to try to help that communication piece if you feel that's something that's needed.
I've heard a lot of parents ask me questions, like, should we use it? Especially because it's one-to-one technology and we have students who are, what is it, third grade and above or fourth and fifth can bring them home, right? But sometimes the younger ones bring them home and they're like, what can they touch? What can't they touch? So just putting it out there, we have a lot of motivated parents who just maybe need some clarity and nobody wants to break anything. All right. So I know the students are very apt at logging in and identifying what they can and can't do, but you know, some families might want to extend learning at home. So if we can maybe help parents understand which apps do use, which ones don't, what is classroom-specific, what is maybe additional enrichment would be helpful.
Okay, we can work on that. No problem.
Thank you. Okay. And the older kids are like, I got it, leave me alone. Middle schoolers and high schoolers, okay. So looking at gap closing, significantly exceeding state standards and closing educational gaps, which I commend every member. I, I know how difficult this can be when you acquire a student body that maybe is, you're looking at maybe making up six months plus this year's academic goals. So I'm really excited that we were able to do that. What specific things should parents be looking for that they can say, this is something, it's a mechanism that's in place that is helping reduce those gaps? I know you named a lot of like metric-based things, but what are we doing that parents can see evidence that we're closing gaps?
Well, I think Gina mentioned the win time that we're doing in school, that 30-minute time in the elementary, 22 minutes in middle school. I think that's something specifically we're doing to close those gaps, because it's extra time, targeted intervention, it's what the students need based on where they're at. And so that would be the first thing that comes to my mind in terms of something that we're doing with the whole notion of helping to close that gap.
And I think the other thing I recommend, if parents have any questions about that, I hope they would feel free to reach out to their child's teacher, because they can certainly ask specifics. Maybe it's something in reading, maybe it's something in math, and they have some specific areas that they want them to work on. They can give them some suggestions as well.
Okay, thank you.
And you had mentioned just what can they do in general. And one of the things that we always tell parents, especially at the younger grade levels, just have, read with your kids, you know? You read to them, model that, those good reading strategies and what good reading sounds like. Have them read to you, talk about what you guys have read. It's, it's really the simplest, but probably one of the most effective things we can do with our kids at home.
And just because you brought that up, I went to Willoughby Library and I walked to the circulation desk and I said, I have students at Willoughby Eastlake. And I was informed that they can get their own Willoughby Eastlake library card, which my kids were very excited to have their name on it, not mine. And they were very helpful in clarifying it. More importantly, I think it's important for all families to know, our libraries are amazing. Not to say that our, our district aren't, but Willoughby, Eastlake, I've visited all of them. And what's also wonderful is there's no more fines and fees for returning books late, which was always a deterrent for me to take them out because I never get them back on time. But I love that we partnered with the local libraries to go and to pull books. And they have these things called wonder books, which read to the students. So if parents, that's what I do when I'm cooking dinner. My son gets a wonder book and he sits down and he's tracking his print and listening and reading. and he sits down, and he's tracking his print and listening and reading. So I just want to ask, who championed the Willoughby Eastlake library relationship?
So we've been working on that closely in our department, but also all the buildings have worked with the libraries for years. And they actually came to us and asked us about that library card option for all of our students. So we're happy to provide that. It enables them not only to check out books, but also to get some audio resources, audiobook resources as well. So we're finalizing that list, and it'll be turned over to the library, hopefully by the beginning of next week, so they can issue those cards.
And they said that just coming to circulation, providing your students information, and they'll quickly take care of everything. So thank you very much to everybody who participated in. I think it's a really important bridge to our community.
With those audiobooks, are they going to be able to access that through their laptops?
They should be able to, depending on, I'm certain that they have apps that they work with through the library, and students should be able to do that. But I don't know the particulars about that.
And we also have Epic for the book reading through their Schoolology as well. One more question, I swear. Can you tell I love curriculum and students? But I think this is important, because we have a lot of parents right now who are in the midst of the beginning of the school year. They're either feeling confident with where their student is, or they're trying to understand ways. They get that parent intuition that something needs to be, they need to be involved more. And I want to provide avenues for our parents to understand it and to know who they should go to. And classroom teacher first, and then building administration, and almost 99% of the time, the supports are provided through that mechanism. There's just two words in here that I feel would be important for the community to understand. Can you just, high-level define the difference between a formative assessment and a summative assessment?
Yes. So formative assessments are those quick assessments when teachers have been instructing on a particular skill, and they may give a five- or six-question quiz or exit ticket to a student after that lesson, just to quickly gauge whether they learned it or not. A summative assessment is one that covers a broad coverage of material. Think of it more like a chapter test or something like that. Whereas formatives, or I taught you how to divide fractions today, and I just want to know if you got that skill, where a summative is going to cover more expansive information that they covered.
Thank you very much. I know you weren't anticipating it coming up. I truly appreciate you being the resource. So, and Mr. Murphy, thank you so much for putting it all together. My questions are done. Rest of the board? Thank you. Thank you very much.
You want to get the next one? Okay. And I'll introduce. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm very excited to introduce Mrs. Katie Warner and Mrs. Meg Skinner, who will be presenting on the Thinking Classroom Model. And I just want to tell you how this came about. I had walked into North one day and just to visit some classrooms, and I ran into Mr. Frye, the building principal. He said, hey, listen, you have got to walk down to their classroom and check out what's going on. I said, all right, I'm in. And I walked down there, and first of all, they're right next, their classrooms are right next to one another. And they quickly came out, and they were talking to me and excited to show me everything that was going on. And I was looking at them like, this is outstanding. And then I said, will you guys present at a board meeting one day? And they're like, okay. Luckily, thank you. But it was just too good. And I just feel like the community needed to know what was happening in this classroom. So thank you very much, not only for doing what you do every day, but for coming here and presenting. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Okay. All right.
Good evening. I'm Meg Skinner. I'm an algebra teacher from North High School.
I'm Katie Warner. I am a geometry and Algebra II teacher, also from North High School.
And we'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to share this teaching model that we're using in our math classes this year.
Thank you for presenting.
So I want you to think back to when you were in elementary, middle school, high school. Maybe it was recent, maybe it was way long ago. Think about what your math classroom was like. So it was probably very quiet. There was a lot of note-taking, students sitting in desks and rows, not a lot of collaboration. And when you think about how the students got their information, all of that information came from the teacher. That was the main source. Maybe there was a textbook, but the teacher was the main source of information for those students.
Now, I want you to consider the students that we currently have in our classrooms. We're talking about students who don't know life without a computer, without the internet, without a smartphone. They have instant access to information. So imagine the struggle trying to get students to really think when they know that they have that information right at their fingertips. So we realized we have to start changing the way that we're teaching to address the new students that we have, because we can't teach the same way we did 10 or 15 years ago.
Now, we've been teaching together for 19 years. It's been a long time. Every single year, we feel like we are reevaluating what we've done. So over the summer, we spend time thinking about, okay, you know, what worked this year, what didn't. Even if we don't teach the same subject, we do collaborate a lot on the content. You know, we love math. So, yeah, we do. So, you know, we're always looking for ways. We want to reach students. We want to maximize the amount of thinking and doing that students are doing in the classroom with the 45 minutes that we have. I've heard many times, you know, make sure that the students are leaving class tired. It shouldn't be the teacher that's tired. Well, we're still tired, very tired. But the students are actually doing more. We're really excited about it. So we found this book, I was just surfing social media, found this book, Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics by Peter Liljehall, and heard a lot of positive buzz about it. I like the fact that it was research-based, and that he had looked at over 400 teachers' classrooms for 15 years. And what he did is he went into these classrooms and would give the teachers an idea, and they would present it for about two weeks. They would implement it with their class, look to see what worked and what didn't. They would tweak things here and there, make small changes, go for another two weeks to see what would, what would happen, what the outcome would be.
And as a result, they came up with 14 practices, best practices that would encourage and increase the amount of thinking that was happening in the classroom. And we're here to present some of those ideas that we're implementing this school year.
So not going to lie, this was very scary to do. So making a change like this in the classroom, it's just, you know, you know you have students that come in that are really set in their ways, and they expect a certain type of class. And when you throw a curveball at them like we did, it was mind-blowing.
In a good way.
The main reason that we did this is we wanted to improve math skills. We noticed that computationally, our students really struggle. They rely on the calculator, they rely on the computer. We've had students just say, you know, okay, Google, you know, what's three times five? Which we're like, come on, you can do this. So we improved social skills. We want students to work together and collaborate with people that are kind of outside of their normal friend circle, and we wanted to increase thinking. So these were all of our motivational factors.
On the next few slides, we're going to give you a glimpse of our Thinking Classroom. In order to get this Thinking Classroom going, there were some things that we needed: vertical whiteboards, and we'll go into why in just a moment. Obviously, erasers, dry erase markers, and also lights. Here's a glimpse into one of our classrooms. The research showed that students were more likely to attack a problem in a lesser amount of time when working at a vertical, non-permanent surface. In other words, a whiteboard. They experimented with taping sheets of paper up on the board or on the walls. They experimented with whiteboards at the seats. Lots of time and effort went into this, and they realized that it was the vertical whiteboards that were the most effective. So we have these vertical whiteboards in our classrooms. You might also notice in the upper right-hand corner, there's a little light. So as we're working with students and as we're moving around, if a student has a question, they can turn the little light on. Or if we're waiting for all students to finish a task, they can turn on the light to indicate that as well.
Is that like a tablet?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to identify. So it's a little white circle on the top. Okay.
Yes. So how this started for us, at the very beginning of the year, we started day one with visibly random groups. The way that you get students to buy into this program is by proving to them, yeah, the groups are random, because they've all walked into a class, had a new seating chart, and the teacher said, oh, these are totally random seats. But we know that students have been placed strategically. So what we do, and you saw on one of the pictures, there were cards on the tables, so we're not playing poker. We were using the cards to indicate where students would sit in their groups. So at the door of the classroom, we would have cards in our hands, and students would pick those cards, and that would be their random group. Works really well, and they seem to like it, and they know it's only for one day. So if it's a group that they don't really think they can handle for more than 45 minutes, it's not a big deal. We also focused on non-curricular thinking tasks. We wanted to stay away from math at the beginning. We didn't even take them to the boards for the first two days. We used some activities, which you'll see in a video. And then we also focused on defronting the classroom. We didn't want them to see the board at the front as where all of the work is happening. We want the math to happen all over the room. So we didn't want them to think of the front of the room as the front. Okay. So this was one of our first challenges. This was actually on day one. We gave them a cup stacking challenge. The whole purpose was to meet new classmates, to get to know each other, to communicate, to collaborate, and to begin to problem-solve. In our next few pictures, there was another task that included some playing cards. Oh, you wanted to explain that.
The flip a card, toss a card.
So students were given a set of, I believe we started with maybe five cards. And they had to flip a card over and have it be the ace, toss a card underneath, flip the next one, have it be the two. They needed to flip the cards in order. It was really hard. They had to communicate and decide, well, how do the cards need to sit in my hand so that when I flip one and then toss one, I get them all lined up in order? I did have a parent come to conferences, and he said his daughter was so excited to show him this new trick that he would never be able to master. And it was just nice to know that students were talking about what we were doing in math class at a high school level. Like, that doesn't happen.
And I have a foreign exchange student who I told him at conferences, I want him to teach me something, you know, each week. And he came in one day and said, I have a card trick. And he's, he's working on his English, and he had me pick a card, and he went through this card trick explaining it. So I thought that was kind of cool that we made that connection at the beginning of the school year, and now he's still doing this. The middle picture is a video. I don't know if you can see that very well, but as you watch the video, I just want you to notice, this is day one. Students collaborating, talking to each other, and working together. And they got it. When our students get to class, the way that they check in, we do the cards, they draw the cards, and we have a list of their names, and they circle. It kind of gives us a way to not only take attendance, but we can see which students were grouped together on which days. It kind of keeps them honest in their picking of their cards, making sure it's random. You would be surprised how tricky they can be. They got me one time. I had a student who had a cell phone, and he had the camera flipped. And so he came up, and he put the cell phone under the cards as he was picking. And I'm like, what? You got me? And he told me. It was hysterical, and I had a laugh. I had to give him credit for being so ingenious in how he did that. But we keep them honest, that they do truly have random groups each day, and people attract.
Mr. Frye will walk down and say, what does he say?
What is that? Where else would you see kids lining up for an education but right here?
Right, Mr. Frye?
They are lining up at the door.
Lining up at the door.
I consider it more of a backup, but they're lining up.
So this is how it's going so far. We've, you know, moved from the first, I think we did five days of non-curricular thinking tasks, into now covering content. And it's tough finding resources out there that we can use in our classrooms. So a lot of what we're using, we're coming up with on our own, using the resources that we have in our classroom, but we're tailoring it for this model. So we've moved into our curricular thinking tasks into the content. Students are studying the material. We're working on mobilizing knowledge. And what we mean by mobilizing knowledge is seeing that knowledge flow throughout the classroom, that it's not just the teachers who are the main source of information, but their classmates as well.
We have a lot of students teaching students, which is amazing. And, you know, with the whole PBIS program, we have Ranger Bucks, so we try to reward those students who are teaching other students, just to keep it going. Mobilizing knowledge is also taking place, because we have vertical surfaces, so the students see what other groups are working on. So we had to have a talk about how it's not cheating if you like the way a group's organizing their work, and you want to model it the same way, or, you know, you're checking your answer against somebody else.
Thin slicing is another important concept, where we start with a very low-level question that all students have access to. And then we use variation theory, where we change one little thing at a time until we increase that level. And before they know it, they're solving a problem that's much more challenging than what they started with.
We consolidate the lessons. So usually, if it works perfectly, while students are at the boards with black markers, we'll go around with a different color, and we'll kind of take our red marker and box things that we like, that we want other groups to focus on. And at the very end of their task performance, we'll point out what's on the boards, almost like a gallery walk.
When we take notes, we take notes at the end of the activity or at the end of working on our tasks. And we take notes for our future forgetful selves. So the notes are for the students. They are choosing what to write down so that they don't forget, or if they do forget, to remind themselves. And it's really more meaningful for them, because they're not taking notes for us, they're taking notes for themselves.
We really want to increase student involvement in the model, so we want them to understand that the learning is for them. Right now, there's this idea that students need to learn to get points to pass a class. And we really want to move away from that. We want them to learn for learning's sake. So we're hoping that this model will help us get there.
So here's a little sample of the thin slicing, so you can see what it looks like. Very basic entry-level question, change the plus sign to a minus sign, increasing the level of difficulty. Until we get all the way down to the end where we have fractions, we have the variable contained within the fraction. And just by one little step at a time, we're taking them from a very low level to a much higher level question.
So this is an example of what the notes look like for their future forgetful self. This is a nice outline that kind of groups all of the topics, so students have a defined space to write all of their notes in. And it's broken up by lesson, just one page front and back for the entire chapter or unit. So it's not a lot of notes. We've noticed students have a really hard time figuring out what to write down. They either write everything or nothing. So that's our next challenge is...
And it's a shift, because students are used to the teacher dictating what notes to take. And we really want them to see that these are things to write down for yourself. So if you really know a concept, you may not have to write as much as someone who needs to write out a full example and annotate and put little thought bubbles off to the side, why I did what I did, to kind of help guide through.
So these are just some comments that we had from students who have done, who have gone through this model so far. So we had Hannah, who said, working at the whiteboards is fun. I enjoy being able to see everyone else's work, so I can compare it to my group's work.
Bryn said, working in random groups is a great opportunity to work with new people instead of just working by myself.
Timothy said, I like working at the whiteboards, because I get to talk to my other friends and make new ones.
And Julia said, I like seeing how other people's minds work and being told about my mistakes without having a lecture about that mistake.
I don't lecture about mistakes. So this is a video of my geometry classroom, this Thinking Class in action. This was one of the very first lessons that we did at the boards. So students are looking right now to see what their task is, working together, pointing things out. There's, you know, the video camera...
There's, you know, the video camera comes out.
They're like such hands, you know? Mrs. Winder, we're not supposed to have our phones in class. Like this is for, this is important.
And this next one is an algebra class. You may not be able to hear, but I want you to really pay attention to how the students are engaged at the boards. If you can hear the math going on, that would be great, but you may not be able to hear it. And like we said, we wanted to increase student involvement. And as we started handing out the cards, we had students say, well, can I do that? And so they've been becoming more involved in the process. I also have a student who apparently I wasn't keeping up quick enough, getting more problems because they were just eating them up. And he took the presentation remote and was just going at it because I was answering questions. So here's a little clip showing student involvement with passing out the cards and signing in. I don't know if you saw, but the one student, when she saw her card, she was like, really super excited.
When they get together with their friends, it's very exciting.
And we even moved the cards around. So I don't know what dictates a good card or a bad card, or a good seat or a bad seat, because we're really not in them. So, but they, but they choose, they have it defined. Did conduct a student interview to give a little feedback on what the students think.
It's actually helped me grow closer to like my new like classmates, how you'd say, like make new friends that I've never really thought I'd be friends with. This class is very different because it's just so unique. We do activities every day. It's so like, just we get to engage. It's my way of learning because I like to hands-on, be able to like, like diagram things out and write things out. It's just awesome and yeah, big change.
So where are we headed? So what we've noticed and what we hope continues is that the focus is on learning, not points. We did mention that. One thing that I've really noticed that I guess during that interview, it just came to me. I've noticed students writing so much more, whether it's on the small mobile whiteboards that we have for them to work with at their desks, so they can practice and make mistakes and erase it. But they're writing more and I think it's because they were at the vertical surfaces. It's a risk-free environment where, in the surface.
Yeah.
And again, I know we said it earlier, but really motivating the students to want to do things for themselves, to want to take the notes, to want to complete assignments, to check their understanding and to really do it for them and not for us, is really where we're moving to move that motivation. So thank you for this opportunity. It was a pleasure presenting and I hope you guys enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
So, Mr. Murphy, and thank you so much to both of you for presenting that idea and for having the energy and engagement that you have. It reminds me of a statement that a mentor teacher of mine told me years ago, and that is, classrooms should sound like construction zones. And they shouldn't be quiet and stoic. You should see activity and engagement and movement and questions. And it sounded kind of like a construction zone. It was nice and loud. One other thing, it just kind of resonated with me and I want to, I want to commend the district as a whole, but I think there's an important point that kind of came to me during both of these presentations. We have our report card, which is very metric and number-based and very stoic and black and white. And then we have this presentation, which is an intangible thing that we will never be able to quantify with a metric, that a scorecard will never show. And I love the statement that you made, and that is, learning for learning's sake cannot be shown on a test score. Their tenacity and their grit and resilience to overcome problems is what will make them successful in an adult work environment when they exit, you know, public education. So once again, I think our test scores are really important. Our scorecard are things that we will, as a board, or at least I, as a board member, will continuously look at and want to discuss. At the same time, I feel that we need to strike a balance, that our district is more than a scorecard. Our district is people, our district are students, it is the approach and the process to learning, not just a test score. And a lot of our parents recently received those, you know, in the mail, where their student fell. And I know a lot of parents either were like, my kid is doing awesome, they've improved, or I can't believe they're only at proficient or below level. And every parent also had a moment where they said to themselves, my child is worth way more than a test score. And I think it's important to have that perspective for our district as well. Our students and staff are more than a test score. And I applaud you both for helping breed those intangibles. Thank you very much and for making failure a mechanism for future success. So, thank you very much. Those are just observations I made between those two. And I truly appreciate you putting the time, putting that together.
Love the saying enthusiasm is contagious. And I mean, I'm just ready to go to math class right now. I don't know about all you, but I am ready to go. And this is, and I do want to say that, you know, this is just one great example. But there are many examples of great things happening in our school district, you know, every single day with a lot of different people. And it's hard to figure out a way to get that out there and recognized. But I just want to remind people that too, as well.
Well, Mr. Murphy, I know you've been in the role about two months. But one of the things that us as a board discussed was trying to find ways to make all the wonderful things that are happening in our classrooms more present. And I don't know about the rest of the board, but I would love, when appropriate, to have, maybe we can allow our teachers to submit to come present at a board meeting if they have an idea. You know, maybe you are one person, 14 buildings strong, but maybe our administrators or teachers could submit ideas to then come and present if they feel that there's something they want to share with the community. I don't know, is that something we'd want to entertain? Let the mountain come to us?
Sure.
And another thing too, you know, some of the seniors, if they wanted to come and present too, how these changes are helping them with their learning. You know, public speaking is something that some of them may be required to do in the future. And, you know, having them come says a lot as well, getting them engaged.
Absolutely.
And I mean, even in the future, being proactive and scheduling maybe work sessions in which those presentations can be. Because I know our regular meetings, we don't want to be here till midnight. We've done this before. So just being cognizant of if the agenda is maybe quite heavy, making a recommendation for a special meeting to allow those presentations to occur, I'm sure we as a board would be happy to entertain.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, so resolutions. First one for your consideration is the resolution for employment of substitute teachers. And this item aligns the district with the state of Ohio in reference to hiring substitute teachers. In October of 2021, the state changed the requirements for substitutes due to the shortage caused by COVID. And this year, the decision was made by the state to continue to ease the restrictions necessary to obtain a substitute teacher license in Ohio. And although some of the educational requirements for substitutes have been changed, the district continues to implement a review process and background checks when hiring our substitutes. I want to assure everybody of that. So in order to adopt the changes passed through Ohio legislation, it is necessary for our board to take action on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I hear a motion to approve item 8A, resolution for employment of substitute teachers?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 8A, resolution for employment of substitute teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion for 8A, resolution for employment for substitute teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. The floor is open. Mr. Murphy, I did have one question.
Sure.
I swear I'm not dragging this meeting out. This is legitimate question. With these restrictions being kind of scaled back, what are we doing as a district to ensure that we're not just putting a body in a room, that these individuals are really prepared to do the classroom management, to keep students safe first and foremost, and also to continue the day's activity per the substitute plans that are provided?
Well, it's, first of all, you know, as I mentioned, we still have an onboarding process and we utilize that to try to at least get some sort of information to that substitute in terms of what they're expected to do. When they take the, a class in any given day, they check into the office and they get more information there. The teachers leave a plan for them that they're to follow. And then typically a sub will leave notes back for the teacher. When the teacher comes back, they're constantly looking at what was done, what was accomplished, talking with kids. And that's our feedback mechanism through both the students and the staff member who is gone, who comes back and says, wow, you know, nothing happened or something really good happened. And then we could make changes if need be, based on that information. So it's a process.
I know a lot of people just had questions about that. In fact, my own students had questions about that. So I just wanted to make sure that we address that. Thank you. My question is complete. Mr. Tarnell?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item B for your consideration is a memorandum of understanding with WEDA. And one of the most difficult positions we had to fill this year was a part-time guidance counselor. And we couldn't fill it because, well, it was part-time. And so I went and I talked to Rob McPhee from the WEDA president and said, you know, I know that normally we cannot outsource positions, but in this case, would you be willing to write an MOU for one year? If we could, so that we could try to fill this position that way. And so he was amenable for that for one year and hence that's what the MOU is for.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I hear a motion to approve item 8B, memorandum of understanding, MOU with WEDA?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 8B.
Thank you, Ms. Menser. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. The floor is open. Mr. Tarnell?
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item C for your consideration is Willoughby Eastlake Public Library trustee recommendation. And as part of Ohio revised code, it regulates how board members of public libraries are determined. And in this code, it specifies that school boards shall vote to appoint a specific number of library trustees. Although this is stated in Ohio revised code, the district and the library operate as separate entities and do not share employees, money, levies, et cetera. The library also selects its own trustees and the district does not interfere with that process. We just have to vote. So the appointment is for a new trustee and our board votes on this because of Ohio revised code.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I hear a motion to approve item 8C, Willoughby Eastlake Public Library trustee recommendation?
Madam President, I nominate to for 8C, resolution for Willoughby Eastlake Public School, Public Library trustee recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Menser. Floor is open. So I know that this is Ohio revised code, but I personally would like to understand it better. So I'm going to reach out to the Willoughby Eastlake Board and just try to set a meeting. I want to, as a board member, really understand what the criterion are and, because we are kind of voting because we're required to, but I would like to have more context. So I just wanted to notify the board that I'll be reaching out to kind of do that and I'll report back. Any other questions? Mr. Murphy? Or Mr. Tarnell? Sorry.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item D for your consideration is building use fees. And we just had not updated our building use fees in several years. And this item is simply just to adjust those so that we could meet our expenses and that the community doesn't have to absorb extra, you know, costs associated with the building use. We believe our schools are a shared asset and want to make them accessible in a cost-effective way for our public. And I know last month we had an update on the theater costs. And so this is just following up with the other building, building fees.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I hear a motion to approve item 8D, building use fees?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 8D.
Thank you, Ms. Menser. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. The floor is open. Mr. Tarnell?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item E for your consideration are the 2023, 2024, and the 2024, 2025 district calendars. And each year, I work with our union leadership to come up with the calendar for next year. Typically, we have to wait for Mayfield as part of the consortium. And once they have theirs, then I gather the committee together and we work on our calendar. This year, for some reason, Mayfield was able to give us two years' worth of calendars. So they were working ahead. So I figured, why not we follow suit and do the same thing? You know, typically, our parents sometimes will call and ask, hey, I'm thinking about vacation or this or that. Do you have the next year's calendar? And like, no, we're waiting for another district. And so I was excited because this time we actually had, not only this year's early on in the school year for next year, but the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Sure. Item F for your consideration is the parent guardian transportation agreement revision. And in certain circumstances, such as when a parent transports their child to a private school, parents are entitled to repayment for mileage. The payment amount is set up by the state of Ohio. And each time a student is added to the list for reimbursement, it must be voted on by the board. This item would fall under that category. Then item G for your consideration is the personnel agenda. And of course, each month, the changes in district personnel are required to be approved by the Board of Education. These changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, and some of the payments made to people that may have worked at an athletic event. When you see a person that is being newly hired to the district before appearing on the agenda, they have been vetted and have also undergone a background check. On this agenda, you'll see examples of all of these. And then informational items. And I probably had something prepared, but I think Stacy did a great job of covering it in terms of our policies. But you know, it is our semi-annual update with NEOLA. And so again, these policies are, you know, come recommended to be changed is usually due to some kind of change in either statute or something like that where, you know, it's really required. And so we meet twice a year with the NEOLA rep and to update these policies. And then the second item under the informational items is item B, the IDEA special education, Part B, special education funds for the 2022, 2023 school year. This item is for informational purposes, only in details funding given to all districts through recent government grants, such as the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan was established to support additional educational needs caused by COVID. Although these funds are very helpful, they do not pay for all of our special education needs in the district, but, and they are also scheduled to end in about a year from now. So September of next year.
Can I just ask some questions there? Because the American Rescue Plan is often, our community comes in and they ask a lot of questions about where did the money go from, from those funds? So here it says that we have $383,914 that must be liquidated by December 30th, 2023. What plans, so under five, we have 78% of the monies will be used to provide mental health services. And then 22% of the monies will be used to provide professional development. So that is what we as a district are using those funds for.
That is correct.
Okay. And do we, we have, I assume, because we have nice statistics, we have a plan in place for how those things will be rolled out?
That is correct.
And since 78% of that is with mental health, is that something that could be included in next month's presentation on the mental health with crossroads and the alike? Just to kind of understand where those funds are going and how it directly impacts our schools?
We can add that, absolutely.
Thank you. I just know a lot of community members really want to understand those American Rescue Plan funds, where they go and where they see them actually impacting the schools. So it might be a great opportunity for that trans- So it might be a great opportunity for that transparency.
Okay, great.
Okay. Just wanted to give you a second to take your notes.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So we'll now move on to item 10A, and this is Board Member's Business. Resolution A is to fill Board of Education vacancy. Do I hear a motion to approve item 10A?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 10A.
Thank you, Ms. Menser. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Appreciate that. So this resolution is whereas a vacancy has been caused on the Board of Education by reason due to resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has the legal authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term thereof, now therefore be it, be it resolved by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board of Education of the Willoughby Eastlake City School District that Ms. Jamie Schatzman be hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of the school district for the partially unexpired term of Mr. William Boxler, ending on December 31st, 2023. So I know Ms. Menser and Mr. Tarnell, you have some good information as to why it is December 31st of 2023 versus his entire term, correct?
Correct.
Can we just share with the community why it's next year?
Per Ohio Revised Code, it was the shorter of the next election or the end of the term. And since the next election is November of '23, it would only be a partial term. And then it would be a separate ballot issue of only a two-year term. So there would be two seats next year up for a four-year term and one seat up for a two-year term.
And those who would run for those seats would have to decide and state which seat they're running for.
Correct.
Which is different than what we've had recently with our elections for board members. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Tarnell?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We'll now move on to item 10B, oath of office to be appointed to our new board member. Ms. Schatzman, if you could join us with your family?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of, as a board member of Willoughby Eastlake Board of Education to the best of your ability and according to the laws now and in fact and hereafter to be enacted during your continued use and set office until your successor is chosen and qualified. Congratulations.
And obviously a nameplate and everything else will be provided. Okay. So we'll now move on to item 10C, certified public records. So Mr. Tarnell, do you want me to read this one?
In January, I believe it was January, I was, became the designee for Mr. Oskus, Mrs. Menser, and Mrs. Bear as the public records designee, the custodian. If Mr. Reedy and Mrs. Schatzman would like to be their own records custodian, they could do so. If not, you could designate me and I will go attend the training that I have to by law and fulfill all of the lovely public records requests on your behalf.
I would like that.
More power to you, yes.
Okay. So that means when public records requests do come in, you would be the one to ensure that we are providing that to the community in alignment with that regulation.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And then moving on to item 10D, November board meeting. So we do have a regular board meeting scheduled for November 14th. And we are, this resolution is helping us change it to November 21st because it conflicts with the Ohio School Board Association's Capitol Conference, which this year, all board members minus Ms. Menser are attending and really seeking out, trying to get as much training as possible to ensure that we are being impactful and supporting our district in the best way possible. So that is our November board meeting. And just to reduce speculation, Ms. Menser had a planned vacation. So it's, it's, it's all it was. There's planned vacation in there. Okay. And moving on to item 11A, we have our meeting notifications. So that means that our next board meeting, regular board meeting of the Board of Education will be Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 35353 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake, Ohio. And then moving on to item 12A, consent calendar. It's the adoption of our consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve item 12A?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve item 12A.
Thank you, Ms. Menser. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Oskus. Floor is open. Just as a reminder to our community, our consent calendar, with this one vote, we are voting on every item that had an asterisk next to it. So if you did not hear us vote on an item this evening, it is being voted on now. Mr. Tarnell?
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Stop in there. Okay.
You get to vote next time.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay. And moving on to item 13A, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Menser. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. And I'm not going to forget this time, Mr. Tarnell.
Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 8:50, 6:00 PM.
We thank you all for attending this evening and we welcome.